Uh.
Okay, yes, looks like very good. Um, so the firehouse sub meeting will meet um twice. And um Joe, I'll turn it over. Merrily, do you want to give us a little update on this?
Uh.
I got my notes, I just figured.
Chair. Well, sure, um.
Yeah.
We uh successfully approved uh a two two um directions. One was for an engineer to um study and give us a report on fire stations reporting and the water issue list or the drainage issue. And the other was to authorize the um contract to move forward pending approval from the town attorney of a few items related to insurance for uh stations one forty and four forty with the architectural part. I think, yeah.
I think that was the gist of it.
Yeah, yeah, we had some discussion about the details, but.
Yeah. And um Brian, have we heard back from the the attorney? The I think the wording, the changes were fairly minor. I don't know if there's.
Yeah, was it? It was discussion about insurance and like the whole harmless, right? And the deminification to the town?
No. No, I have not seen anything from Rick on that.
Okay.
In return. Okay. So.
Yeah.
Got a lot from Rick today out of that. So moving moving along, um hopefully we can get through in um four or four forty by the end of the year.
Mm hmm.
And then the rest of the work upon one forty is gonna be more a twenty twenty six project.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Correct.
Brian, any updates on uh EHD or CROG?
I have a meeting coming up with CROG. Few the next, over the next few weeks in August, but nothing new.
Okay.
Uh. I'm on the CCM Public Safety Committee now.
Okay. Is that George? Um, thanks. And then uh the Wells Task Force has not, I don't fix since their last meeting, although it has been a little while.
I think the only thing I don't know if we've talked about is we have this state funding for the.
No movement yet.
Mm hmm.
Uh.
Well, we we.
Got the fund.
Right, okay, yeah.
No idea, no timeline.
Okay.
Um, no idea what, you know. The state can move slow sometimes.
Hmm.
And so that's what we're dealing with.
Um.
We check off it.
But just in case, I, because I honestly do, I don't remember if we've talked about this in a council meeting. But the idea is that, so this was state money that would be managed by D to help with water solving systems in the vineyards, switching them from timer based to volume based, that.
Yes, yes, which will, which in theory will cut the uh amount of salt going into the soil by about sixty six percent or two thirds less.
So.
Um, and you know, obviously all indications are that all these issues around town are all next door neighbors of water softener systems. And um this is the way the state applied for grant funding, they get acronym of it, I can't remember. Uh, deep, deep applied for it, we got it, in conjunction with DPH, but deep is also controlling where it's going, what homes and who's gonna do it and all that, which we're glad, not to have staff dated with it, but at the same time it's gonna move a little slower than if Megan were handling it.
Sure.
Hey, can you just uh, I know we've talked about this before, but just uh walk us through again, things that the town did. Uh, did we repave the vineyards and like draining and all these things?
Every single thing that we could have done.
Yep.
From curbage to cleaning out the catch basins.
Yep.
To moving them a couple of years ahead on the repaving schedule, because there was cracks uh in the pavement that potentially.
Yep.
Could have been uh putting salt into the into the soil.
Yep.
Everything we could do in regards to that was done. Moreover, changing over to the green pro green snow pro system through the University of Connecticut, deep recommended to adopting all of their uh measures in regards to responsible distribution of salt uh during the storms. This year was a low big storm year, a lot of smaller events, but the smaller events don't require numerous applications. So it was a good year uh for us and also helped us pay a bunch of time to save money uh on solid as well.
Um, just one quick follow up, um with the curbs, were, did there not used to be any curbs at all and now building or did we re-repair like we or re-rebuild what was there?
I believe we rebuilt where there's catch basins around there, but I go that.
Are you sure it's all curbing?
That's right, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. No, it's great, you just, I find it's great that we have it now. I think the communication with the state leaves of it to be desired, so appreciate you, Brian, and my staying on top of it, but um definitely really need like a a project plan and at least like some communication about when they're gonna get the wall rolling up on that. But again, appreciate you for the work.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think I'm missing any committees that report to the town. Uh, so we can move to liaison uh liaisons for boards of committees. Um, I'll go to council but first.
So PCC didn't meet last Sunday, canceled their meeting. Uh, their next meeting is in two days on the fourteenth, and they're gonna start planning the scare program contest.
Harvest bass, I think.
Harvest bass, we'll call.
And the scare pro.
And the scare, they're both.
It's on Columbus Day weekend?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Yes, it sounds like it.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe.
Thank you. Exciting. Um, anything else?
No, no, they didn't have, I didn't have any other meetings, and that's it.
Nice.
It was a nice easy July.
Nice easy summer.
Mm hmm.
Um, this'll go next. So both my committees met for the past couple of months. Um, the WPCA had their quarterly meeting. Um, the only thing of note that they had up on their report was um there's a small probably be a small reduction in the interest payments for the um sewer upgrade project in Vernon that we um use, so we bear a burden or portion of the burden for paying for that upgrade, uh which was completed a couple of years ago. Um, and then because they meet only quarterly, their next meeting is until October. Um, and then the Economic Development Commission met last week. Uh, they had a couple of interesting items on their agenda. Um, so one, uh the storage um facility down on the Green Line um meant to discuss a request for a tax abatement extension um due to market conditions um that they had facing. So there's an interesting discussion on that. Um, because they already have existing tax abatement, the exact way to handle it isn't exactly in accordance with the ordinance that we just passed. Um, so we'll look through that form review process, but what it sounds like is um it'll go to planning and zoning first, and then it will make its way to council, because we have the final say whether to yes or no, those those sorts of things. Um, then also, uh, they've completed their economic development plan, and it's being reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then that will also make its way to council. So a couple of interesting items that they're they're working on right now.
Just one question. Do you know how long the storage uh company has been there?
I think it opened like pre, like a little bit before COVID, around that time. Um, yeah, it's, yeah, well, it's um you have time to watch the reporting as well. So you can remember, so you're about it. Um, but I won't go into too much detail, because I'm sure when the discussion comes up, it'll get to us, you'll have to ask questions.
Sure.
Uh, Councilor Ryan?
Uh, yep, the Historic District Commission met. Um, they approved a COA for uh UCC Church and Verizon needed to make some changes to some existing equipment that was there. Um, it's, you know, talking about fencing and things of that nature to be sure that it didn't, uh, you know, doesn't impact the aesthetics of the green. It was unanimously approved, there's no, there was no problems with that. Um, the, also the thing that I mentioned to them that I bring to the council, and I've been working with um Jacob and with Brian, uh, was EverSource did tree trimming throughout town, including on the green. Um, and they expressed concern regarding the excessive trimming that occurred to some of the trees on the green. Um, including uh descended of the charter oak that we have on the on the green, which I didn't know about. Um, so uh after talking with uh Brian and with the town, town did have initial meetings with EverSource um and uh asked blood to a company that they used to trim the trees prior to which to sort of emphasize the importance of maintaining the um sort of nature of green. Um, and so so they they did do that on the front end. And so now, as I've mentioned, the Historic District Commission, I'll bring it to the council and and um we're working with uh the with Brian and uh council to draft a a letter just um expressing the uh the displeasure of the way in which the future was done. So um something that that the Historic District Commission felt strongly about. Um, and there are some uh photos in the Historic District Commission meeting minutes. Um, I encourage you to go to look, it's definitely, they definitely pretty aggressively trimmed like the trees. So that is the latest of UCC.
Thank you.
And thank you, Brian, um uh for working on that letter and getting all the information about the what 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 happened. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chris. Uh, Councilor Shay?
Uh, yeah, nothing to report for me, I was the time they had meetings, I'm traveling, so.
Uh, council meeting.
So did attend uh called into the PCC meeting last night, and yes, they did present the economic development plan. Uh, there was some really interesting discussion. And it will be coming to us. Um, there were some uh, there was a lot of back and forth about like um potential planned use um recommendations, and um I'm really looking forward to meeting on what comes out of it. Uh, so I think it's, that'll be very, very interesting. And then there was additional discussion, um, and we can, Dave can attest to this. Um, that Dave is going through and looking to uh sort of clean up um and the regulations that also provide areas where there um could be some flexibility or where wording needs to be or could be modified or or needs to be modified. So that effort continued last night, among something that they've been working on all along. So um that was relatively brief, and there wasn't really anything else at public hearings, no new applications last night.
Thank you. With the as far as the economic development plan goes, is the PCC done with it? Or are they gonna meet more times on it? I'm just curious from a timing perspective, when it's going to council.
I don't, are they, are they gonna do another? I don't think they're gonna do another meeting on it, are they?
So, so yeah, they want, they want one more crack at it, because I, I think they have a chance to really digest it. So they're gonna next meeting, they'll they'll provide some feedback, and we can get to council. I'll probably write up the GDC meets in September.
Okay, so I stand corrected. So, yeah, and and, because they just, they just got it last night, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, all of that information is available in their agenda and
Yeah.
in their packet, which is online and lives there, so it's accessible to everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Um, that closes out item seven B. So go to new business. Uh, first item is introduction of the new director of recreation, Ryan Denis. Uh, Brian, do you want to do an introduction?
Yeah, great. Uh, Bruce, as you know, Bruce Watt left. Um, as we discussed earlier, uh we had a robust applicant pool, so around thirty or so. Uh, approximately ten assistant directors or director, actual full directors of town rec departments applied to come here to Talon, so we were uh very happy with the candidate pool. We interviewed five, um of which uh Ryan turned it was, you know, great, two great candidates, the five that we interviewed. Uh, Ryan was uh the best candidate, and uh we worked with him to get him uh secured and he and hired here full time. He's been here about two weeks. Uh, I know he's gone around to um all the locations with DPW to kind of get familiarized. We're on the schedule, I wanted to be here for myself. Uh, we're gonna go around to all the locations uh soon as well, uh just to kind of address uh you know, what my vision and our vision is uh for that rec department, the facilities uh moving forward. Uh, so Ryan has, we always do with the director, uh when they come in, is they come to council and uh introduce themselves and say a little about themselves. If you have any questions, certainly you can ask. Uh, Ryan uh came highly recommended uh through official means and unofficial means, uh that the people just said how great of a person he was and how upset they were uh to lose him in the town of Farmington. Um, and this is from, you know, people who I know and trust my whole life, and so I was very happy to to hear that aspect of it. Um, most importantly, I always talk about culture, hiring right people here to keep a good culture. Uh, and he was, you know, straight on uh for us in in that regard by all accounts, again, by all backgrounds that we did. Uh, so we're very happy and I believe lucky uh to have him. So, you know, I welcome Ryan Denis, if you want to say something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Deputy counsel, pleasure to meet you guys, as Brian mentioned, and thank you, Brian, too, for the introduction.
My name's Ryan Denis. Um, first and foremost, I couldn't be more excited to join the team, uh being your guys' new director of recreation. Um, couldn't be more grateful to join such a spectacular community. Um, first couple of weeks have been have been awesome. Uh the welcome has been extremely warm. Ryan and his team have done a really great job of making sure that the transition uh for me has been smooth, but most importantly for the department has been smooth. Um, as you mentioned, I've uh had the opportunity to head around town and take a tour of a lot of the facilities, parks, fields, um and meet a lot of uh the different town departments, um members of the community, youth sports organizations, so trying to get the ground running as quickly as I possibly can. Um, as Brian mentioned, being building those relationships uh that we know are always so important um in our work. Um, and uh make sure that we're ready to hit the ground running. So um as you mentioned, I come from the town of Farmington Recreation Department. I was there for a little bit, over eight years. Uh, part of my time there, I worked for the town of Windsor, um in Human Services, actually as their senior transportation coordinator, uh leading their dialer ID unit. So that's my professional background. Um, I live in Simsbury, uh with my wife and my son. And um, yeah, like I mentioned, I couldn't be uh more excited to join your guys' team. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
You already did a rec advisory board meeting already?
No, Paul.
Almost.
Almost. We tried.
He was there.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Good, good to meet you. Um.
Thanks.
I'll open up that council, anybody has questions for Ryan?
I'll just say welcome. Thank you, you know, for, for excited to have you, um starting your busy time right this summer and all the different programs going on. So uh looking forward to working with you and uh and uh thank you for for coming on, and thank you to the the town staff, to Brian for the the effort that went into hiring. So welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, I'll echo that. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, um, sorry to hear about the queue increase.
No, it's not.
It's really not.
No, I, so we went over this and and
Really?
not that I'm a stalker or anything, but I went all the way to drive and, you know.
Great yours.
But here's, thanks. The uh, the we detected at one point.
Uh.
Sure.
Simsbury to the to Farmington, there's no easy way to do it.
Nope.
And it takes forever.
Exactly.
And this is, you know, two ninety one and ninety one, twenty two, two nine, twenty ninety one, two ninety one, eighty four.
Okay.
Okay, so probably more miles, but maybe less time.
I would say that's out here.
Nailed it.
Yeah.
I enjoyed my podcast time, using me a chance to settle in a little bit, forget the work, so.
Here's to, um, if you came back in a in a couple of months to talk to us, just that, you know, and there's always a you know, fresh person and sort of a different perspective on things. There's like different opportunities or, you know, things that town does well, and maybe town doesn't do well, just to kind of get your perspective on that.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, now, along those lines, um, what do you see as some of the big opportunities in the department? What are you kind of excited to to work on? And do you have any goals for the department?
Yeah, um, initially, I really do want to just digest, you know, the culture of the town. Um, I know the department is on a really great path. Um, I have massive shoes to fill. Um, you know, coming in uh behind Bruce, but um my priorities off the bat are really just to to digest kind of the the direction that the department is heading. Of course, as Brian mentioned, discussing with him kind of uh the town's vision uh for where the town as a whole would like the department to head, um but to use my expertise to get there, of course. So um aside from, you know, digesting what the uh the department and the community are like there, of course, we'll bring that creative mindset and approach, you know, using my diverse professional background to try and maybe increase some program opportunities um for the for the community and hopefully increase some revenue as well.
Thank you.
Very well. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome. Nice to meet you guys. Thank you so much.
Good meeting you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Right. Brings us to item eight two, uh consideration of a resolution to prove the necessary funds to ratify Teamsters local ten thirty five collective bargaining agreement. For the period date is July one, twenty twenty five, thirteen thirty, twenty twenty eight.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So I'm obviously myself and Mike Wilkins isn't here. We have just have discussed this with our town labor attorney, Pat McHale, uh in executive session. Uh, this contract, uh and like the next one, the CSCA, when it will discuss the next agenda, and both of those come up every three years. Uh, and this is the end of the um negotiation point, uh looking at data from around the state on the uh both the Teamsters and CSCA, um in regards to DPW and and staff workers. Uh, we are well in line uh or better than uh many towns around the state. So I I believe it is a good deal uh for both sides uh on the contract, and uh I recommend, you know, moving forward with it. Uh, as you heard earlier, if we don't take any action on it, it will move forward anyways uh per state law. And uh we're here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Um, you know, we talked about it in executive session, um any additional questions or comments from counselors?
Just, just the uh for the public's benefit, the Teamsters uh book is composed of our DPW employees, is that right, Ryan?
Teamsters DPW, I'm sorry, yep. And um CSCA is a lot of administrative staff here in Town Hall, and as we, you know, said earlier, uh the fire department will be the next contract up next year um for negotiation.
I'll just add for both this item and the next one, um as discussed, this is in line with expectations for the current adopted budget, um eventually. So this is not not going to be a an unexpected, unanticipated financial burden, for lack of a better term, to the town. So it's it's a reasonable burden.
I'll, I'm sorry, I'll just, I'll just add, um, and it's also in its reasonable, I think someone may have mentioned in comparison to other towns, other, you know.
Yeah.
It's our size for what what has been um done in those those areas as well. So um I think the town did did well and employees will do well as well. So I think it's a, it's a good uh win.
Yep. Appreciate the uh for town staff and um bargaining heated members to
Yeah.
come to an agreement, go officially quickly.
Yeah.
Um, so if there's no other comments, uh I'll entertain a motion to approve. Agreement?
So moved.
Ooh. I'll second that.
Okay, uh moved by Councilor Bebe, seconded by Councilor Butler. Uh, is there any discussion? If none, um, it's important, we'll do a little call vote up on that. Uh, Councilor Butler?
Aye.
Uh, Councilor Moran?
Aye.
Councilor Shay?
Aye.
Councilor Bebe?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so item eight two is approved. What brings us to item eight three, which is uh also to approve a bargaining agreement, uh but this time it is for the CSEA SEIU Local two thousand one.
Uh, thank you, Chair. All the things I said on the previous one stand for this contract as well, um well within line with the data of what other towns I have done. Um, it I think it's a good deal. Again, it's the administrative side uh here in Town Hall, and the company, it's, it goes every three years, it'll be up again in uh three years. Um, and to, you know, I believe our staff did a good job again negotiating this contract.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from counselors? Then I'll entertain a motion to adopt uh the agreements. Moved by Councilor Butler, is her second?
Aye. Her second, sorry.
Seconded by Councilor Bebe. Any discussion? Uh, Councilor Butler?
Aye.
Uh, Councilor Moran?
Aye.
Councilor Shay?
Aye.
Councilor Bebe?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so that agreement's also adopted. Item four, consideration of a resolution to authorize a town manager to execute such documents as are necessary to sell claims against certain pharmaceutical manufact- manufacturer related to the prescription of opioids.
Right, this is um, this is a lawsuit involving uh Purdue, uh and and allowing the town uh basically to uh be a um victim, I guess is the best way to put it, in this lawsuit. And uh in order to do that, you have to authorize me to enter it to the agreement. Uh there's, we have previously done uh this before, I believe in twenty twenty one, before I got here, we entered into it. We are now receiving funds for it uh with us tonight, and we have uh Yolita to tell us how we manage those funds. Um, and we have Ms. Kristoff from uh Human Services to talk about how we spend those funds. Basically in the main beef bit is to hire a prevention specialist, but then they do a lot of other stuff, um schools and such in regards to prevention, uh opioid and drug use prevention. Um, so I recommend or ask that you ask us or allow us to engage in this this lawsuit. And the next one is it's the same, again, kind of the same thing again. Um, to get involved, and although that's with eight separate companies.
Thank you, uh, Brian. Any questions or comments for counselors?
Uh, Councilor Moran? Um, so just to clarify, is this um, because the various states, like they've reached a settlement with the the Sacagawea family or wha- whatever entities. Um, and so is this, this is giving the town the authority to deal with the state in Connecticut as far as like however we're gonna receive our funds? Is that what this is?
I believe so, yes.
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 Thank you.
Does this, do these um funds appear in the current budget?
No.
Will they appear in the future budget?
Well, yes, so you know what, like, like with the previous lawsuit.
Mm hmm.
We know we have the funding, we know we, what we, how we can, we can use it.
Mm hmm.
And we used it. Do you remember this year, we're talking about um paying for our prevention specialist?
Right.
It's budgeted on how we have it. Uh, she has a fund, have you, you have a fund set up for it, I believe, correct?
We, yes, we do have a project direct under grant funding.
Okay.
That's where we depositing these funds.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Butler?
Is there an estimate as far as what the settlement is gonna be?
Mike, I don't know one. Do you know one, Mike?
No, I, the, I don't think they have an estimate of what we're gonna get. That's, the first step is to participate, and then once that's reached or once we agree to it, then I think we eventually will know the amount. But no, I don't, there's no, no number I'm aware of. once that's reached or once we agree to it, then I think we eventually will know the amount. But no, I don't, there's no, no number I'm aware of.
Are they, there are limitations on how money is used? Or is that kind of, there is?
Yep.
What are the limitations?
I don't, Mike, you know the exact limit. I know, I know that looking at them and then comparing it to the mental health addiction uh survey that we did, it was years ago.
I can speak to it a little bit.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So prevention work in the community, it can be, look, there's different buckets that it falls into. So a lot of it is things like harm reduction. So Narcan um QPR trainings, which Jillian recently was trained in so that she can now provide trainings to the community. Um, there are treatment options, so providing money for referrals or transportation for folks who need that type of treatment. Um, anything educational in the schools and the communities pretty much falls into that category. Um, trainings for any professionals who want to go to convention summits. So for example, Jillian and I will be attending the Connecticut Prevention Summit this coming September. So there's a list of remediation strategies that we have that we follow. Uh, so whenever we want to bring, for example, Stephen Hill's gonna come back this fall to speak to the middle school and the high school. So he's an example of a type of speaking engagement you could use those funds for.
Since we've kind of already been through this process before, right, with the current monies we have?
Yeah.
After we sign the agreement, like, do we know how long it usually takes for them to figure out how much we're gonna get and when that will come?
I'll, I'll give it to Mike, but I would say that this, the first one started in twenty twenty-one and I believe received funds in twenty twenty-four, if I'm, uh, I'm accurate. Mike, does that sound accurate to you?
Uh, yeah, I think it's not a, it's not a quick process from this point till getting the funds, but I assume within a year or two, there should be wrapped up.
It's important for sustainability.
Yeah.
Of the programs that we're starting now with prevention specialists, um, you know, keep doing it for years and years to come.
How much longer with the current sum of money do we have to continue running things?
We were in pretty good shape for a while, I believe. You know, you know how long?
We are. So we've been, we've started to use the money for Jillian's salary. That's where the bulk of the funds are going for prevention specialists. So we did up that number looking into the current settlements that are coming in that we're already receiving. So we did roughly about twenty-nine K last year for that. We're gonna move that up to about thirty-seven. Uh, and we still have plenty of fund balance. Uh, most recently we had a hundred and seventeen, but the funds keep coming. So the expenditures that we're making even for like that big speaker, Stephen Hill, that was, you know, a four thousand dollar deposit, we'll pay another four thousand. So you know, these programs are important, but they're not gonna break that budget. So we can sustain that for a long time. Um, but by entering into these agreements, it just offers that, you know, additional continuity.
Okay. And as for current, you said that the funds keep coming.
So we do know that these funds we get out um right now for the next eighteen years, some of those national settlements are coming. Um, and so we kind of been keeping track of, you know, we currently have, you know, five of those eighteen payments that we know of right now. Um, so we do have a long term ahead of us.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, that's good, good information. Cause I think we talked about it in the background, but I didn't delve into like the mechanics of how that works.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great, well one, thank you for answering the questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, oh, one other quick thing upon this motion and the next one um afterwards, which is very similar. Um, there was a slight error in the packet uh for the recommended motion. It says that the grants will be deposited into the capital non-recurring expense funds. That should read um that the funds will be deposited into the grant fund project opioid. Um, so if there is a someone does make a motion to adopt that recommended language, um, might be good just to specify that you're referring to the amended draft resolution. If you wanna read it out loud, if that makes it easier.
Sure, I'll, I'll make that motion. Um, so for agenda item eight-point-four, um the, so with the, with the depositing funds into the grant fund project opioid um account, so uh the motion as proposed with that amendment that we received.
This is motion by Vice Chairman Moran. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. So, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item eight-five. Um, Brian, anything you'd like to add for this item?
No, the same exact uh situation as before, basically, but this is a conglomeration of companies.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to adopt uh the draft resolution, item eight-five.
Same.
With the uh
Same change, right? It still says capital non-recurring.
With the same change. Yes.
Mm-hmm. So, so I'll make that motion. Lisa, do you need, if you're good with the language or do you need, okay, um, so I'll make that motion for eight-point-five.
Made by Vice Chairman Moran, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Butler, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, extensions, or none, that motion also passes unanimously. Great, uh, item eight-six is a quarterly financial update for the period ending June thirty of twenty twenty-five.
Uh, thank you Chair. I have, uh, Yolita Lescus is here to to give us an update, quarterly update as we do every quarter. Um, so there's no surprises as to where we are financially here in the town.
Hit the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, and this is for the fiscal FY twenty twenty-five preliminary numbers. Um, we did close fiscal year July thirty-first. Um, actually it was July thirtieth. We did the K a little bit before just to make sure that we're running smoothly. To make sure there is no hiccups. Uh, August first filed on um Friday, so we just wanna do it uh smoothly and went all great. Uh, we had a small hiccup, which we addressed next day. Uh, we did close the book. Next week, the auditors um conducted conference meeting. Uh, we provided all information that they asked ahead of time. Uh, they were here for two days. Um, they expressed that information we provided uh timely and didn't have much questions and they will be back in September. So so far, uh, we still are doing some adjustments and we will have some adjustments proposed by auditor. So currently we do uh reporting uh of fund balance of surplus nine hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, which is primarily due to um some favorable um surplus in revenues and but the big expenditure that it circled reported the surplus in the Board of Education, which is three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that surplus, um, once the audit is complete, uh, will be transferred uh to Education Reserve Fund. So technically, the town will see only five hundred eighty thousand dollars preliminary surplus for FY twenty-five. And again, this is will be upon uh the audit completion, uh last adjustments made to general fund. Um, I did provide it some details in the report. I don't know if you have any questions?
Um, Counselor Moran?
Um, so as a result of the projected increase of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand approximately, so that means that we don't have to, we did not have to use the allocated three hundred thousand from the unassigned fund balance, is that right?
Correct. That would go back to unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
Um. Any questions from counselors?
Um, you said the auditors were gonna be back in September?
Correct, two weeks.
Back in September, thank you. Um, and how, um how long do you expect that follow-up process to take?
Uh, this is my first year here with the town, uh, but so far I heard good positive feedback from last year. Um, they said that they will be here for two weeks.
Okay.
So, um, I'm gonna work with the auditors to make sure that we close and get act for done, you know, timely and early.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a question. As far as the um cannabis sales tax, um, looks like we reached forty-six thousand. Was that what we anticipated? Was it more? Was it less? I'm sorry, which one? Cannabis sales tax. Cannabis?
What page is that?
Um, seventeen.
Yeah. I was along seventeen.
I believe it's the three.
It's in the table, right?
So the cannabis uh sales tax, it's um in license permits and fees.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the final number we see forty-six thousand dollars. That was on budget.
I think we had discussed that at once. We were trying to project what we're gonna be getting in from that. And I, I can't remember if that was
Thirty, thirty, thirty-five, I think is what I thought.
And that's what I thought you said. Okay, so we're actually a little bit over what we thought we'd be making. That's great.
We actually, now by twenty-six, we have forty thousand dollars assuming to receive.
Great.
Yeah, conservative.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So, um based off on what we see in preliminary numbers, what's uh unassigned fund balance and at the end of the last fiscal year?
It's a hard question, but I'm gonna try to.
Okay.
That's okay. Uh, so currently, um, in act for FY twenty-four fiscal year end, we reported twelve million three hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Because we didn't use additional three hundred thousand dollars. That's going back to unassigned fund balance, which just makes twelve million six hundred approximately.
Okay.
With the town portion, right, five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars adding to the fund, unassigned fund balance. And taking out the budget for FY twenty-six, we use up on the signed fund balance, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. We are gonna be around twelve million five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, at the end of the day. So that is, sorry, I'm trying to remember the numbers that we said. So it grew by how much?
So it grew five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars right now, approximately.
Okay.
Taking apart the Board of Education transfer.
Okay, that'll go to their ERF.
Yes, and that their quarter uh of this is growing by twenty-six.
Um, yeah, I just had one.
No, good one.
Yeah, um. And then can you just remind the council how much we are planning to use in that balance in the current fiscal year?
FY twenty-six?
Yes.
Seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's in the budget. But again, it's based on how the fiscal year is gonna, you know, go, the, the all, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Revenue and everything.
We're, we're a month, two months into it, so.
Correct.
Um.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Uh, so, so we get to twelve point six million balance because we're adding back into three hundred thousand that we didn't end up having to use on the sign fund balance. Then we're adding approximately an additional five hundred thousand from the additional revenue that we're talking about. And then we're, we're taking that figure and then we're, it's less the two, uh, seven twenty-seven number and that's where we get to the balance of about twelve point five million.
Correct.
Okay.
Twelve million four seventy-one.
Okay, thank you.
So we're still depositing more into it than we're taking out for fiscal year twenty twenty-six?
No, we, well, if you're taking three hundred.
Yeah.
You know, so you're almost the same.
Right.
So eight hundred eighty-eight thousand you're putting back and you're taking seven hundred twenty-seven.
Yeah, so we're depositing more than we're taking out, right?
Just a little.
Alright.
Um. Got another question. Unless anybody else wants to go? Alright.
Oh, we're.
Okay, um, on the health insurance section, it's okay for that, um. How are we doing up on the balance? I was trying to read through the numbers, um. It wasn't, it wasn't clear to me if we've, um, if the reserve went down, um, over the, from June twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-five or where exactly we are with that.
Actress.
We have cash balance, um, June of twenty-four, um, with the CD was two million three hundred thousand. And our ending cash balance, uh, June thirty to twenty-five was two million four hundred ninety thousand.
So it grew.
So it grew hundred and ninety thousand. Um, that does include the CD interest. Um, we had a, the net revenue um over expenditures was a hundred twenty-five thousand just on a claims basis, for claims. Um, and we earned an additional sixty-five thousand in interest from the CD. So that, um, that made the net annual income a hundred ninety thousand.
Okay.
Like that, uh, cash balance of two, two million four ninety thousand, if we set aside one million three hundred forty-nine thousand for the I V N R reserve that we have to do, um, then we're down to one million one hundred forty-one thousand of unencumbered cash balance.
Okay. Is that, what's the, what was the unencumbered cash balance a year ago? Is it?
Uh. I do not have with me.
Okay.
Yep, I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you know directionally if it was?
I, 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 I do, um, I, I, I don't think it was substantially different.
Okay.
It become, it hasn't changed that much.
Okay. At this point, um, looking forward with, what are your, what's the forecast?
Um, I think, I think the claims, um, for next year, the claims for this year are gonna be about the same roughly than last year, not substantially different. Um, you know, when we get this uh updated with our uh new risk corridor, I don't think that's gonna be substantially different either. Um, so I mean, it's, it's hard to tell exactly which way, but you know, from what I understand, it's not gonna be a big, big swing either way. That's, that's, that's what it's looking like.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Um, Counselor Shay?
Yes, excuse me, so, make sure I'm following correctly. So it looks like uh on the expenditure side, it was the Board of Ed that had the most largest reduction expenditures based on budget of the three thirty-four thousand, right? And some of the other departments had a little bit. Uh, actually they make up about the other half, the six thirty-six. Um, the total of reduction expenditures on your worksheet, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, three hundred one thousand dollars, yes.
And now on the, on the revenue side, so it looks like, I'm, I'm curious as to what makes up the other financial sources. So I see seven hundred eighty-two thousand reduction revenue with three hundred thousand, that being the unassigned fund balance that we're not using. Wh- what's the other four hundred eighty-two thousand?
So in my detail, um, if you just go to uh the reference, um, just below, I do explain there was a transfers. So we had water testing transfer, uh, sixty-two thousand, ten thousand approved uh in August fourteen, twenty twenty-four. We did have, um Board of Education transfer seventy-six thousand dollars that, that was moved to reserve fund education from the prior year surplus.
Okay, so that would reduce, that's considered a reduction of revenue because we're transferring that, that balance to, to a reserve fund?
And did, uh, we did also, uh, workers' comp settlement that was approved to use on the sign fund balance, three hundred forty-four thousand dollars.
Oh, that was a biggie.
That's right.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that's, that's a part of the, so it's almost a, it's almost a wash then, to be honest, because we, we spent three hundred forty-two thousand on the settlement, put it back to. Okay. Yeah, there goes, Counselor Shay. Um, uh, what's the supplemental, so we had, it was almost a wash, I'm just curious, what was the supplemental motor vehicle revenue? Of a hundred and eight thousand dollars, what, what price is that?
Supplemental?
Yeah, motor vehicle supplemental revenues you see.
Yes.
We budgeted by a hundred and eight thousand, but then we had motor vehicle tax collections of nine, shortfall ninety-seven. So it's almost a wash.
It's, it's almost a wash. So sometimes when we do budget, we, it's hard to um separate those two elements. But then, um, back in October twenty twenty-four, a Cesar had to add some supplemental vehicle revenues and that was not part of our budget.
What, and what, what is the supplemental revenue from motor vehicles?
Um, changes in the motor vehicle. So if people bought the vehicles and then we reported and they, you know, we found out about, we need to make assessments. So those are di- different type of things and cannot give you money to, to.
That's fine. That's fine.
Don't bother.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shay. Um, any other questions with counselors on financial reports? Uh, thank you, Yenya Litsa, for answering all of her questions. Um, I appreciate it. Um, that brings us to item eight-seven, which is appointments to uh various municipal boards and commissions. Um, Chris and Joe, you wanna tell us what we have tonight? So we've got several.
Yeah, we have three appointments and three reappointments. Um, so, uh, for, for reappointments, we have Steve Osier, um, the former council chair for the Water Commission. Um, he had had some uh prior involvement with that and the commission expressed their excitement to have him on board. Um, then for Planning and Zoning Commission alternate, um, Catherine Deathly was put forward as, um uh, being endorsed by the Holland DTC to fill the vacant Democratic alternate spot on that. Same thing for Noah Bryant, uh, but that's for the zoning board of appeals alternate spot. Um, and then there are three reappointments, so people who are currently serving, um, that are looking to extend their terms. Uh, Fritz for the Housing Authority. Fritz for the Housing Authority, uh, Susan was accused of pushing up people with disabilities. And Robert Dyker for the, another for, you know, uh, commission up people with disabilities, so. Obviously appreciative of, as always, of all of our volunteers that step up to help run the town, greatly appreciated to Sarah Bet for, um, you know, just. There's, there's, there's always a lot, uh, there's a lot of vacancies, there's a lot of boards, and so she helped to, you know, make sure that we're. We stay on track and we keep all these things rolling, so, thank you.
Anything you'd like to add, Councilor Shay? No, Chris does a great job with, uh, so much information, so I always rely on him. Um, any questions, comments from other councilors? That case, I'll undertake a motion to, uh, make all the appointments and reappointments listed in the town council packet. So moved. Moved by Council baby is your second. Uh, second by Council Butler, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those favor. I.
Hi.
Close, stained.
Just wanna thank everybody that's willing to serve.
Absolutely, yes, very much appreciate it.
Very much appreciate it, thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, um, that moves us on a whole business, I'm sure there's none. And then item ten is reported in town.
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, last week, Governor Lamont was in my office, um, mainly to discuss, um. The housing, affordable housing bill that, um, he vetoed and looking at the path forward. Uh, for us, the town of Talon, I said, you know, after speaking with, um, Andy Powell, our, our zoning folks. The main concern was that, you know, we want affordable housing here, and, uh, but we do, do not have the infrastructure. For it, i.e. sewer and water lines on, on our rocky surface of the town. Uh, he was very understanding, because the previous stability vetoed was punishing towns, and we, we didn't like the punitive. Aspect of it, um, he was very understanding of that, looking at ways to move forward. If the state could find a way to help us fund sewer and water lines to certain locations where we have land that could be developed for affordable housing. Uh, and, and, um, he was taken to those areas, uh, to see them, then, then obviously, we'd be much more willing to embrace that bill. Uh, so, that, that was the, the, the crux of that meeting, we discussed some other things, uh, but we're very thankful that they've come out and get our opinion, Andy Powell was there. Uh, with us as well to discuss them, and, and I thank him for his volunteerism, uh, and how knowledgeable he and the rest of the zoning, uh, folks on the board of the. Commissioner are, are, are just fantastic, so very happy, very happy with Andy, uh, to be there. Uh, in regards to the, um, state police providing, uh, crime data, we, we, myself and the town manager in Ellington, Matt Reed. Former police chief, uh, met with the commissioner at the Department Works to Service of Public Protection, the Colonel of State Police as well. Uh, and we made some good progress, uh, I spoke with the, the, the gentleman who's in charge of all their data. Uh, today, we, he is going to work on a report that we can regenerate and use and provide us data. Uh, not just us, um, all the resident trooper towns, um, the commissioner was very understanding of our concern and that, you know. I said, let's say we pay our troopers five hundred thousand a year for law enforcement here in Talon, let's say they've been here for ten years, we paid five million dollars. To the state police and we have no idea, zero, if crime is up or down or anything to do with what crime is where. Uh, nor do we know how the staff, troopers are deployed on a day-to-day basis, is it in response to. Where certain crimes are and or it, it, or is it just arbitrary? Currently, much of it is addressed, but not officially, and some could be arbitrary. Uh, so we're looking to really professionalize and modernize the resident trooper program, I'm very thankful of the commissioner, uh, for taking a meeting, and the Colonel as well. Uh, they, they embraced what we're doing, and they had some other ideas themselves, so. Following that meeting, we have a meet, again, a meeting in September with their data person again, to kind of look at what we want for data as a town. I sent her the state police contract to Rick, with some, uh, read some changes to the contract, nothing of, of substance. Um, and it will come to council, I believe, at the next council meeting for your approval, um, and I would like you, give me approval to sign the contract and, and. Uh, submit it forward, um, so that, that was a positive on the state level. I, I wanna tell everyone that I, I have Dave Corcoran, our, our development director. Here, he has a lot of information to provide you, uh, I've been getting a lot of questions, so he's gonna give a, a general update as a part of the town manager's report after I'm done with some other stuff here. Uh, as you may have heard, the Starbucks is not coming, uh, to, uh, the Big Y Plaza. Uh, they, they hired a new C E O, uh, at, at the very end of last year, the new C E O has taken a new direction in regards to new. Um, Starbucks, so any new Starbucks in our region of the country, as this is told to us by the property manager who met with Starbucks, uh, over at the Big Y, Mr. Nanny. They have halted all new production of, um. Uh, new buildings, and we were notified that officially of that on just this past, uh, Thursday. Uh, that being said, Radio Coffee, uh, right around the corner, a local company, uh, is getting very close to opening, there has been significant. Uh, work with our, uh, building inspector and our fire marshal to. Genuinely assist them in getting that building to be a, uh, approved coffee shop to have customers. Uh, and such, so, uh, they did, they've done a great job in coming up with some creative ways, uh, to make sure that the building is safe, so I thank them for that and wish the, the coffee shop good luck. I'll do some posts on it, uh, similar as we've done to Maria's, they, by all accounts, have been successful. The governor went there, uh, for breakfast as well, I talked to the owners, told them he was coming there for breakfast to be ready, um, it was very, very, uh, positive. I, I wanna thank, um, Ms. Sullivan and Brenda Falluzzi for their work with the farmers market, our farmers market's going strong, they do such a good job, they're volunteers, they get paid nothing. They're up there every Sunday morning, uh, putting it together, I, I, and we are so lucky to have them, so I'm very thankful. While I'm in the business of thanking people, uh, the Conservation Corps did such an amazing job at the Nafla Dam, uh, getting that. Uh, dam taken down, so that, uh, is, is, uh, Dave Corcoran can tell you, we are gonna do some. New thing called Beaver Deceivers to help the, uh, prevent the beaver dams from, uh, damaging the property again, moving forward. The Conservation Corps saved us tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, in, in the work that they did, and we're, we're. Just so genuinely lucky to have those volunteers waving through the water up there, and it's, I don't know if anyone here is ever part of Beaver Dam, but it's gross, and, uh, they did a great job. Uh, as you know, we met, uh, Ryan Denine, and, and our, our Director of Recreation, we also hired an assistant town clerk, uh, Haley, uh. Bohatic, uh, she also became, uh, came highly recommended outside of the official, uh, channels, on, uh, background, on, you know, again. Personality, culture, kindness, caring, uh, really caring is the main thing that, that we look for, uh, and so highly recommended, uh, for, for her to be here, so. Uh, very lucky to have her on board, um. I'm sure you'll get to meet her at some point, uh, when we have the, when we have, uh, the clerks up here, once in a while, Kathy does come up and gives, gives updates. Um, Human Services is seeking donations for the, uh, back-to-school gift cards from now until September eleventh, back to school is coming. Uh, they, they get donations of gift cards and give them to families that need to buy, uh, school supplies and clothes and such for, uh, kid, again, children, uh, going to our school system. Uh, you can contact Human Services at eight six zero eight seven one three six four eight, again, it's eight six zero eight seven one three six four eight. Uh, if you would like, uh, to donate, the places they like to give donations, you know, basic cards like Target, Kohl's, Walmart, Staples. Amazon, uh, work as well, so anyone that can donate is great, the, um, Talon Community Youth Theater, their, their high school musical, uh, play. It's just so, so successful, uh, you saw, you saw Teresa Kristoff here earlier talking about the opioid funding. Uh, all I can say is how strong is she, um, what a, what a great, uh, addition she's been, uh, to our team, she is, was the producer of the play. Uh, one of the major changes they did this year was allowing for, um, ticket sales online. And in that ticket sales online opportunity, they also added a donate button, so you can donate to the theater. It was so, so easy, I, I did it when I'd be purchases tickets and tack on, uh, some bucks for them, so now. They're actually starting to, to develop a fund, so that next year, um, they can pay for students. Kids who are in need, that can't afford the, the payday to do the, the theater, uh, they can pay for costumes, they can pay for props, so. Um, the community theater is just such a, such a great opportunity, a hundred and thirty seven kids, I believe it was. Uh, that, that, you know, spent their, many of their nights this summer, uh, preparing for the play, so. Uh, any parents, and I'm sure there's some of here right now, that had kids in the program, just to speak so, so highly of it, and, and. Um, we're very lucky to have it, so congratulations to them, twelve, over almost thirteen hundred sick, tickets sold online, a hundred, yeah, a hundred and thirty four. Uh, participants in all, so, um, that includes behind the scenes, kids learning about, you know, lighting and sound and such, so, uh, lots of opportunities there. Our senior center is having an ice cream social on August twenty sixth at four P M, uh, the cost of the event is five bucks if you're registered with the senior center. Uh, so thanks for them, uh, doing that. Whereas we intend to seek the low sit funding for a potential, um, I talked about this before, on the Talendry, uh, to the, uh, basically the business center down here. We wanted to do sidewalk bridging, uh, bridging everything together, uh, that is moving along well, while we intend to, intend to seek funding. Uh, this fall, so we're, we're in pretty good shape to do that, thanks to Megan Masa for all, all of her work and all the things that she's doing, but, uh, including that. Um, as you know, the animal, we, we got, um. Representative Nuccio got the, uh, funding for our new animal control facility on the, the state of Canada bonded, um. A bond approved by the bond commission, but it's not yet on the agenda, it wasn't on this time's agenda, uh, I believe there's another one coming up in December. Uh, hopefully, and hopefully we can get the, get the money on that agenda, we have several years. Uh, before our, the, the state rules kick in on, on the shortcomings of our current animal control facility. Uh, so hopefully we can get it on the agenda moving forward, um, with that. I wanna, I wanna recognize Chief Lightell, um, for a lot of the work he's done quietly, uh, through a lot of the storms, um, and heat waves that we had here in town. Uh, watching, he also watches for our droughts and such, so, a lot of extra stuff that he does behind the scenes that, that. That council and our residents might not know, um, but every, every storm, there's been, there's been a few decent storms this summer with power outages. Um, and reaching out to Eversource and, and some of the flooding issues that we, minor flooding issues that we had around town, um, he does an excellent job with that, so. Uh, I believe that should be. It, oh, let me just recover our, our, our paving. Uh, D P W has finished up their paving program, High Ridge Drive, Bennett Drive, Austin Drive, Joe Sabbath Drive. Uh, the big one Slater Road and, and Slipstick, Snipstick Lake Road, uh, have all been done. Uh, and Willie Circle as well, and, and, you know, Slater Road and Snipstick Lake, we used to get a lot of complaints, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had a bad storm that washed out. A lot of Snipstick Lake, so, uh, glad to have had, uh, those roads replaced, I think, D P W for their flexibility and, and, and their ability to, uh, get that done, so. Uh, with that now, I will give you, um, Dave, there he is right there, sorry, I was trying to get back there, uh, he has a bunch of updates, so go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, yeah, just wanna give you an update on a few items, uh, one has to do with the sale of, uh, surplus properties. So if you remember, we put the four up for sale, we got an offer back on one of them, um, so what I'm kinda doing now is. Gonna send out another round of letters with an extended deadline, I'm gonna try to shake the tree a little bit, see if we can, uh, uh. Get some of the adjacent property owners interested in, in making a bid, um, but the one that we did get a bid on, we'll, we'll bring to you very soon, probably, so it's the next, it's the next meeting. Um, Talon Marsh is still out there, I talked to Deep today, um, they are, we submitted our survey to them a while ago, their. Their deep surveyor has to approve, the survey is deformed, and that's been sitting in their queue now for a few weeks, uh. But I've been told that hopefully soon we'll get it back, at that point, uh, we, we don't anticipate any issues with it, at that point, uh, what they estimate is about sixty to ninety days. Um, we've gotta do some title work on our end that we can't do until we get the, the approved legal descriptions back from the surveyor. Uh, but we've got the town attorney teed up to go, uh, as soon as that happens, and then, and then you'll have to pass a resolution at some point, so we'll, we'll get that to you as soon as possible. Uh, yeah, otherwise, Brian, a bit, um, most of the business activity, also the, the medical office building, it's sixty nine, is, is well underway. Uh, building permits are already out for this, uh, site plan modification, planning and zoning approved a couple of weeks ago for the, uh. Expansion of, of what was the Webster Bank, which will be, uh, uh, Dr. Pelosi, uh, the optometrist, is, is basically doubling the size of that building, so that's great. And, and as you can see, the, the Santinis are, are well underway, so.
Take a look at those Santini buildings, one of them, the, the maintenance building is view. Uh, it's, they, they, they're, they're doing what we expected them to do. That's it, Dave?
Well, so it's a lot of questions.
Uh, just a quick question, uh, so thank you, thank you for the summary, um, and thank you for following up on the, on the E D C report, um. So, noticed, uh, new construction going on at the corner of Anthony and Rhodes.
Yep.
Um, so, those previously were old subdivision lots?
So, yeah, so those are old subdivision lots, some of them were merged back into, uh, what became College View. But a couple of them remained as lots of record, so right now, the only one that's under construction is the one right at the corner. I have heard some concerns about wetlands impact, I know our, our wetlands agent is on it, I don't have a.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think it would be.
Yep.
Um, so, I, and I, when the clarification is, so, yes, I'm sure the wetlands agent is watching that area, because we all know there's a ton of wetlands here, um. The, the other thing was that the lots of record. Were not, so that subdivision plan still stands even this many years later?
It does, yeah, yeah, um, I, I don't remember the exact timeline on it, but I, I, my understanding is that.
Okay.
As it does, is we, we researched it back when, when they were, uh, up.
When they came forth, okay, because the original subdivision there showed, I mean, a, a, a very large number of lots on. An acre or less.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah, so there's only a couple left, so, many of them went away. They, a couple of them remained, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, so, follow up question, so sorry, where, where is this? Corner of Anthony Rhodes.
Uh, the corner of Anthony, so, if you, uh, at the corner of Anthony Rhodes, right across from Birch Grove. Um, there, that is the, um, the corner of that property goes all the way, um, to where the multifamily development started and. Now is under auction, are they going to auction, are they actually going to auction this?
Well, I don't know.
We believe they may actually be going to auction this time, yeah, the, the.
Signs out.
The signs out, the signs out, the crazers have been in our office, so.
Lucy's gonna pull the football away.
We're gonna take bets? Um, yeah, okay, it'll be interesting to see if that proceeds, but anyway, the, a long time ago, what, seventies maybe?
Yeah.
Seventies, the, um, the previous owner of the property had submitted and had approved a subdivision plan, which had. Which was according to the old regulations, so it was lots that were of similar size to what's already existing in, on the Anthony Road, Virginia Drive area, right? So, and, and obviously, back then, the current regulations for wetlands and setbacks and stuff. Were in effect, so, um, when, when we were looking at the, that, I wasn't sure that those, that those lots of records still actually existed. That's why I just asked the question, I knew that a bunch of stuff was merged in order to get the multifamily, um, uh, proposal through.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's good.
And, and they clarify, a couple of those remaining lots of record are entirely wet, and can't be built up.
Right, right, so, so they were, they were approved before existing. Wetlands regulations before existing setbacks, and, and, and because. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wade into the regulatory morass here, but because those regulations. Um, especially regarding wetlands are federal, they supersede any local subdivision approval, just to summarize it.
Effectively, um, but, so. When they came back to at least construct, they only have building permits out for one lot right now, it's one at Rhodes and Anthony. So in that case, they worked with the H H C again, they followed the modern wetlands regulations.
Okay.
In order to establish that, that a setback is, is placed in accordance with modern standards, so.
Modern standards, right.
And, and they, in the house, let's be, it means setbacks, uh, the lot, the lot itself was too small to be conforming, whether in every other way.
Right, so, so a lot that was previously proved, that is basically ninety percent wetlands. Would not be approved because the, the current protective regulations supersede the old subdivision.
Okay.
Sounds to your question.
No, yeah, I just want. I think it's common history on that too, um, because I knew about the development of multi, uh, multi-family or multi.
Yeah, that was, that was a long time ago.
Stuck in limbo and, you know, it's really.
Yes, yeah, it was. This is like the third time they've got to auction, fourth?
Uh, I think it's the third, yeah, yeah.
Third times, third times.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that, so, um. I know, so the property that sort of faces Rhodes, Rhodes, that's the, for the combination for that, but they've cleared what looks like two lots on. The Anthony part of that curve, so I assume they're, they're, they're planning to build homes there.
So. It's unclear what they're doing at this time, we, we, they, they called to ask if they could clear, which. We don't have anything in our regulations that prohibits free clearing, um, if they can demonstrate to the Wetlands Commission that. They've somehow met the Wetlands regulations, that, then perhaps with. If they can demonstrate to the Wetlands Commission that they've somehow met the wetlands regulations, then perhaps, but despite all of it, it seems like that would be a pretty challenging endeavor. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other questions for Dave or Brian? Just one, sorry, I need, how many units are going in on the Santini development?
Two forty. Two forty, yep.
Forty, okay. They're building it in stages, is that what they're finding?
Yeah, yeah. So they've got the top two thirds of the building's foundations poured and ready to build up. And then once, but you further along with that, they've still got kind of down the hill, uh further behind Big Y, uh space for a few more.
Okay.
They they, I think by by twenty twenty six, they'll have somebody in that first building is what uh
Oh, yeah.
Latman had talked at Santini yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh we drove, we drove the property today. It's it's framed and
Kind of works.
Yeah, it's somewhere. They're moving.
Yeah. Okay, um there's nothing else uh for Brian or Dave. I'll move on to item eleven. Thank you, Dave, for filling us in on all the exciting stuff that's going on.
Yep. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Um item eleven is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Um so we're moving to adopt the minutes. Move by uh Council Miranda, is there a second?
Second.
No. I think I heard Council baby say it, it's a slightly faster.
Whatever.
Um is any discussion on minutes? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, say aye.
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 Any extensions or nays?
Obstain.
All right, Council Shay abstains. Uh but the minutes are adopted. Um correspondence to council, I think. Here, do you have a?
I'll just say, uh, yeah, so Councilor uh Graney is uh gonna be taking over uh the correspondence to council. Uh he had pre-existing the event that prevents him from being here tonight. Um I'll I'll know, I tried to go back through it and see what we've had since our last meeting. Um I know we received an email regarding concerns uh of contaminated wells. Um and I don't recall any of those off the top of my head, uh but I'll make sure we go back through it and and get any that that came in onto the record for the next meeting.
Very quiet summer. Yeah, did you?
I I just wanted to know, because I think that Council Graney sent us all an email, but didn't realize not to include, just to include the two of you and not to include all of us. So it's basically saying that he wasn't gonna be here tonight. Um so technically, because that he's only supposed to communicate with you as the chair, Brian. I just wanted to make sure we got that on the record, so it became an official part of the meeting.
No, thank you. Um, all right, so move up that item. Um I guess if Council Grady has other things to add, it definitely could go next to next week. Um for chairperson's report, I don't really have much. The only thing I had was um we've started the uh routine um town manager review process. Uh councilors received an email with um the form to fill out for um a town manager fully review. Um if you could fill it out and then send it to myself and Chris um for the August twenty seventh meeting. Perfect. Um no changes to the process. Uh it's just the first step in in doing that. Um, okay, item fourteen, communications and petitions from council persons. Anything tonight?
I wanted to, so I I sent an email through to um Brian to inquire about the G I S um site because I had gone to it a couple of times and it was down. And I just got the email with the new site, which I just was able to hit today for the first time. So thank you for following up on that.
That's great. You had you.
It was, I I was really, really optimistic by the, it's always a little bit of trepidation when I first look at these things and then, you know, click on something. But it seems to be working really well.
And Sarah Beth, you did a blast on that, right? If I remember correctly.
Yeah.
We sent on the blast and um Jason mentioned that the more detail will be coming throughout the year.
Yeah.
Um in terms of, I mean, the site's working perfectly fine. They're just gonna enhance it as time goes on.
Yeah, it sounded, so when when I looked at it, I wasn't sure that the, so I just, I just poked around a little bit, but it seems to preliminarily seems to be really nice. It seems a little, it's a little more straightforward than the old, the old format.
Yeah, nothing but thumbs up from people who use it often.
Yeah, so thank you for that. That's good to know. And I think it's gonna make um it easier for people in the business community and the development community to get the information they need also. So, thank you.
Yeah, I got to play around with that a little bit too. It, I definitely think it's better than what they have, what was previous, same place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, anything else? Here, Council Miranda?
I'll just uh note as well that I did attend the Talon Youth Theater's uh historical musical production. Um I I know, I saw Council Buckler. Um they did a fantastic job. Teresa did an amazing job. Um it takes a whole lot of people to to get a hundred and thirty plus kids involved in something like that. Um and, you know, partner up the older kids with the younger kids. And so it's a great tradition sort of in Talon that that we get to do this and it gives uh an awesome opportunity for for uh Talon Talon youth to to engage in that. So well done to all the students and um certainly to Human Services and everybody else who contributed. They did a fantastic job.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we'll go to uh item fifteen, public list of participation. Um same deal. On any subject within the jurisdiction of the council, but this time there is a three-minute limit. We'll go to the room first. Go online. Go back to the room one more time. Go online one more time. Seeing none, we'll close out public list of participation and we'll go to adjournment. Is there any objection to adjournment? All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn at eight sixteen to the end.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good.